Well, stand with us for the invitation and remain standing for the flag in that corner. Oh, Hagan.
Eternal God, we thank you this afternoon for the privilege that it is to be able to serve our community. We thank you, oh Lord, for the opportunity. We ask tonight that every deliberation that comes before this council that we give it our full consideration and we'll act in the end according to your will in our lives. Let us do those things that makes our community a better place to live and to raise our families. We thank you for these who are with us tonight and we ask that we don't do anything that make them ashamed of us. We ask all these things in Christ's name.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the Bill of Rights, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Wow, we got a crowd tonight, didn't we?
I hear protracted enough.
They got a movie for this tonight. We're glad to have all of you over here for sure.
Maybe some future council persons out there.
Yeah, yeah, sounds good. I'll let you have my seat any time. First order of business tonight is the consent agenda. Y'all caller, we got our order report, I guess kind of late hour. Everybody got the, everybody got it written here. Couple pages, you have to read it.
The water zone.
Yeah.
I think it's, yeah.
It's on the, well, I mean, I might have on the back page.
Yeah, yeah.
The 181 or 182, 181 or 182, whichever that one is, is paid in full.
Yeah. It's one here, two. It wants to take up now. I can't remember the number. 181, number 181 is paid up now, so. That's that one list. Did any discussion, anybody had any questions on the agenda?
Well, I'm the one that was real huge last time, or they pay any on it?
It's headed full.
Gracious, okay.
Paid full.
Big? Oh, that's great. Fantastic.
I'm sure that I saw it, but I didn't see it right now.
We've been headed on the last, and we got mine today, I believe, a lot. So you kept Rod Delia's positions and those?
The what?
The water report.
Yeah, it should be in his book. Is it not Rod?
Well, I just told him I would say that I read it yesterday. The ink was about four, five of them.
That's all, yes.
But I don't, I got it, it's closer to the front.
Yes, it should be right after your.
Yeah, and because you were talking about the big one, you said it is now paid in full?
Paid in full, yes, sir.
I entertain a motion. We accept the consent agenda as presented to the council. Your motion.
I make a motion.
I have a motion. We accept the consent agenda. Go here a second.
A second.
Have a second. Any further discussion? How do you vote, caller?
Ah.
Smiley?
Ah.
All right. We were gonna have Phil, but he didn't show up.
I'll give that report in mine.
Okay. On the attendance audience, we have Jake Strickland from the Firdout for a check presentation. You got a few minutes?
Happy to be here again this year.
Thank you for being here.
As y'all know, the Florida Department of Environmental Protection. First off, my name is Jacob Strickland. I'm our manager of Collinworth State Park as well as possibly our spring state park. Florida Department of Environmental Protection administered a program called the Florida Recreational Development Assistance Program. This program funds resource-based recreation projects throughout the state of Florida, and I'm proud to announce once again this year that y'all are the award recipients of $100,000 for the Austin Palace Facebook.
Fifty thousand.
Oh, sorry, fifty thousand. Y'all take a hundred, whether y'all put in for it, maybe we can work something.
Yeah.
Can I get a photo?
Well, you had just presented one the other night for a hundred thousand, so.
Rod, they want a photo of.
Yeah, if I can.
Y'all listen. I guess we have a little bit of oxygen.
Yeah, go, go, ladies.
We got all, we all gotta get in here. And we can all set up for a billion dollar.
Get a hold of the chair, sorry. Don't get close. Yeah, me, daughter.
All right, one, two, three.
Yeah, with the splash pad, we do it already.
There we go.
This is for our splash pad.
Yeah, we're gonna have a, if everything goes horrific, we'll have splash pads, hopefully by next summer sometime. The way it doesn't work, it's kind of slow now. All the small kids, all y'all little brothers and sisters come over here and play in our splash pad.
That's right.
There's some fun things right here. I like that. Mr. James Walsdame, Jason Rudd, presentation of trophies and plaques. If I can get Mr. James Walsdame and Mr. Jason Rudd.
And Brian Brock.
Oh, I need to see that. And Brian Brock.
We got some trophies of his ball team. The guys who wasn't here are aware their ball team went to the state playoffs and they did really, really well. They won their first ball game and was really competitive for the next two ball games they played. And Coach Rudd there didn't want to give the trophies out until the season was completely over. So we decided today was a good day to do it. And he's got some trophies that he wants to present to the.
He won't do, he didn't bring them out here on the stage.
And then they can get in front of the camera over there.
Yeah, so we're wanting to see what we got. There you go.
Jacob.
Are they too fast for y'all?
Yeah, a little too fast.
Derek Budby. Alex Newcom. Devin McKitten. Jacob. Jacob Spence.
We have four trophies we'd like to present to kids that stood out. We have Josh Drake, MVP. Alex Morales, Most Improved. Brian Stone, Defensive Player of the Year. And Trent Rudd, Offensive Player of the Year.
Jason, could you get them all in a picture?
Yeah.
Get them all.
If it's possible for us to get them all up in one picture with the coach, coaches.
Coaches.
That would be great. I got everybody.
These goes to the coaches, but I'll wait till they get through. I'm gonna present these.
I know, I'm just saying that we got everybody in there.
That's here. There's two of them. I think there's three of them.
All right. Y'all made us proud.
Yeah, I just want to say that I was very proud and privileged to get to go to watch these guys at Wausau all year long. And being the recreation guy there, I was getting feedback from other parents. I've never heard anything bad about these guys. We have a super bunch of kids here. I went down to the state where they were staying there. They behaved themselves the whole time that I seen them while they were in the dormitory. Hats off to all the parents and all the coaches. And I'm really looking, looking forward to seeing you guys play on up through high school. And you have a good Chipley? Good. I'm gonna sit on the other side and see the boys beat the crap out of Chipley. Saying that, I got, we got the city has a few plaques that we want to present to coaches. First, Robbie Stone. Brian Brock. Jason Rudd. Like I said, Jason, I really want to thank and appreciate you. You really made me look good down there at the ball field. These guys went way above and beyond what I thought, you know, was I was expecting. You know, the fields were always looking really nice and prepped, and all I had to do was go down there and line them off. I can't ask for no better help than what you guys did. And, you know, I wish if I could start all of them again tomorrow with the same thing, I don't think I'd change anything. I had a great, great bunch of guys, and I'm really looking forward to seeing them move on up to bigger and better things. Really appreciate it. Mr. Tyer, you have something you want to say?
I'd just like to take a minute and pause a little bit. I mentioned something that's on my mind. Sixty-three years ago, sixty-three years ago this summer, I was a fifteen-year-old in Pottamont City. Wausau had a baseball team called the Red Sox in 1953. They had that team for some time. A hundred years ago, they had a team, the Wausau Red Sox, 1915, 1916. You've seen pictures of them, brother Hagan. On that team ironically was Walsingham's and Taylors and Roddersons and Harrows, but there was one named Jesse Waller on there, one little French capoe. And he was the first baseman, that was my grandfather. I'm saying this to say, I want to thank the city of Wausau and James Ivan for bringing back that Red Sox, Wausau Red Sox. And I'll also take this opportunity to mention that today, three hours ago, I was at a funeral in Chipley, and there were five or six of the guys there that I had just got a chance to speak to that played on the Wausau Red Sox team sixty-three years ago. But the one whose funeral it was is the best baseball player that I ever saw play baseball in Wausau, and that's Reverend Charlie Walsdame, just an exceptional player and a Wausau Red Sox. And for me and Houston Taylor and Donald Carter and all the rest of the Red Sox from back in 1950s, we appreciate the fact that this year, James Ivan, you all chose to call this team the Red Sox. Means a lot to us, means a lot to us. Appreciate all of it. Appreciate what you all are doing for our kids.
Thanks, Mr. Tyer.
Mr. Chairman Baer.
Yes.
As liaison from the city council to the Recreation Department, liaison means that we kind of watch the budget and if there's something wrong in that particular department or something that needs to be checked on, we bring it back and discuss it with council. For two years at least, we had tried to start our rec program back. Some of you, some of you remember, some of us remember when we had an active rec program here. You can't imagine how happy I was after speaking to Mr. Rudd and Mr. Hall among others. Are you interested? They said, we know a guy. And one afternoon, James Ivan came to the house and we sat on the front porch and probably an hour, hour and a half and talked about his vision for what he could do at Wausau. And I'm so pleased, along with Mr. Tyer, along with the rest of this council, and I don't pretend to speak for them, but as the Recreation Liaison, I am so thankful. To our players, to our team, let me, let me say to you, probably in this order, the people that had the most influence in my life growing up was my daddy, my pastor, and my coach. And I dare say that's maybe still the same situation. And you've got some, you've got some men here that don't do what they're doing because they have to, they do it because they want to. And they want to make sure that the world that you grew up and then raised your little boys and girls in is a better world than what, than what we see in all around us. And to go to state at the end of the first year of it being reorganized and reunited here, I think that is just an amazing thing. And to our coaches, we, we say thank you and to James Ivan. Of course, you're gonna, you're gonna have something for the fall and then something for the spring, and he's just, he's just gonna keep on having a continuing program, and it won't all be baseball. We're gonna have a continuing program here, and we hope y'all will continue to participate in it.
I need coaches for next year. I need coaches for next year. I don't want to, I don't want to start next year from scratch. I want to be able to tell the children when they come to sign up, this is who your coach is. So if you can give me a, you know, a little bit of advance notice that you want to be a coach, I already got a couple. That way I can go ahead and assign you an age group, but next year when we do signups, we can go ahead and tell the children who they're gonna play with, instead of me having to embarrass someone out in front of a meeting that we had beginning of the year. I take that, there was a nine and 10-year-old group that we had that didn't have a coach. And I had one guy from Chipley, and I want to make sure, one of these days I'm gonna try to get him up here to see you guys. He's Chipley, was from Chipley, had no family here whatsoever, no connections. He was originally from Enterprise, and he come up and told me, he says, if you can't find a coach, Mr. Walsdame, I'll do it. Well, I couldn't find a coach, and this guy took that team and he coached them all through the year, like I said, and he did it because he wanted to. And what really amazed me was he didn't have no family here. Just, we didn't have no grandkids, no, you know, no nieces, nephews. He just did it because he wanted to do it for the city of Wausau. So hats off to them, guys. Thank you.
We'll see y'all back next year, right here.
Yeah. With state title.
Ms. Jessica Rudd has some presentations also.
I'm gonna start off first, I guess, with a presentation to the town of Wausau with your plaque and a check. We're gonna give you your thousand dollars back.
Wow.
Wow.
Because we raised enough money that we didn't need it after auction. So we wanted to go back, you know, naturally to the.
If you like.
Rec department.
We all have to get up here for a picture then.
We want the coaches in that, not me. I want the coaches in that picture, so. Brian and Jason and Robbie and the boys.
We gotta do it one more time.
Yeah.
My boys, if they want to get up here with you.
That's fine, too.
Yeah.
Every board is fine.
Thanks, this is your turn, so Wausau Recreation.
George in the front.
Oh, no.
It's already just saying that, right? Hannah Ram.
This one I go into Taylor Hall.
Oh, no, we got, we got a thing there.
I got a cashier's check.
Okay.
Okay. That being said, the boys, they worked really hard, went above and beyond. For us to be able to raise that much and naturally give that check back, that speaks volumes. But not only that, we had enough left over that we have some gifts here for them. So when I call your name, if you'll come up here, and if you were here tonight, that was a good choice, because tonight's not the beginning. So if you didn't show up, I will. So Devin McKitten, come on now. Alex Morales. Brian Stone. Alex Newcom. Jacob Spence. Jake Riley. Derek Budby. Trent Rudd. Josh Drake. All right. Am I missing anybody? I get all the kids here. All right. Now, our coaches. Let me look in here at my cards. Randy McKitten. Brian Brock. Robbie Stone. And Jason Rudd. And I'd like to just read this real quick, just for the boys. Maybe I'm gonna stutter over it. A good coach takes his love for the game and instills it in you. He molds you into the player he sees inside of you and watches your talent and dedication grow into a skill that you both can be proud of. His payoff is the smile he sees on your face after you have reached your goal. His drive are the tears you cry because you want it so bad. Our boys don't cry, do they? Knowing that he had the same feeling inside him too. Make him proud and never give less than your best. You both deserve it. Thanks for listening.
At this time, we're gonna call a five-minute recess. That'll give young players, the ones that want to go home, need to go home, need to go home and get that first aid and homework, whatever. Y'all can go ahead and be excused if you want to. We certainly appreciate if you, if you want to stay. If you have other things to do, let's do it. Five minutes.
Thank you. Thank you.
I figured that'd be a little. I'm thinking about it.
James Ivan, give me a call sometime. When it's seven, four, three, it's my relationship.
That's all right. I got seven. Yeah, that's all right. Well, ten, I got ten right now. Now I'm looking for it. Yeah, I'm going to two, the last game, starting with, and do all that stuff. You see, I'm a child. I'm focused. I heard it going loud over.
True, for sure.
Quite what like middle school.
Yeah.
Cleaned it out, did it? It's disappeared. They cleaned it out. And I can hardly wait to get out and see that splash park in operation. I swear, that's a fun thing. Made me want to pull off a road from British League, get out here. I'm gonna do it by myself.
If we picked up a goat this week.
We picked up a goat twice this week.
Did you, if we got a goat hash?
Not yet.
I didn't go to, I didn't get one in firing all that, and I think that was a move.
Well, the goat was out today back on somebody else's property on the Farhu, and so they called the goat, and we got the goat. Now they can mail the goat out if they so desire to, but.
We can make it stick in. We just crossed that street over, and they would, they would just cross that street over, and they would keep a fella from keeping a haul. We, we, we're a big fan. Now, I don't know, I don't know, I think it's one of my toy vehicles or miniatures or whatever, but.
No, he can buy that one. He's a pretty good size goat. I did come through the parade yesterday, Saturday. Yeah, he was up here waiting free, running around.
It was on the, it was not on the hood, it was on the cab part, the SUV down there. I had one the day side first, up on the vehicle.
Did I have my SUV?
Well, that's why. I mean, it was the vehicle there, but I thought, that goes somewhere else. I did think that.
I live out of town a ways, and I might come get a opinion from him, but that ain't.
Nobody's saying that. Okay, we'll come back to order, and, uh, next item on the agenda, no one has signed it, so we'll follow on through to the clerk.
Okay, in your package, you have a letter from Shepherd's Gate Church, just stating that they're not gonna use the Pussam Palace for their food distribution anymore. And that's just for information to note that it came into the office.
I talked to Mr. Guy, I didn't know that he was writing the letter, and then I talked to Margaret, she told me that she had one. It's also my understanding, and I tried to explain to him, uh, it's my understanding from Margaret that the, he said the false accusations. I, I don't think that there was accusations made, we had concerns about it, but in fact, it was not the people from the church, from the food distribution that made the meals, it was, it was.
It was the restaurant.
Somebody else.
The restaurant.
Yeah. If somebody else had done it, and I asked him would he reconsider because it serves a good purpose and simple and all that, and he said, well, so that, so that he knows, so that we know that he's departing on good terms. He said that, that, and I was part of the association, when he started, that the reason he was going down there, he thought that all the churches would hail. In fact, it wound up being only his church, especially since Brother Ott, uh, Brother Ott had passed away. That it wound up being his church, so if it's just gonna be his congregation, they're just moving it back to their, to their properties, and, and that way, it will be easier for them, they don't have to move anything up here, everything will be done from there, so. He, he assured me that there was no, uh, animosities, no hurt feelings, anything like that, but that, that they did not do that, and then what you just said.
I thought, I thought, well, maybe we didn't make it clear.
Yeah.
Cause it was not a mess, it was, when I went down there, and I didn't say they left it locked, unlocked, someone had left it unlocked.
Yeah, I, I, I think it was just, sometimes we, we hear and interpret, and, and.
Yeah.
So I explained it, I explained to them, and I think everything's okay there as far as, they moved it back more out of convenience because none of the other churches do go down and help them.
Well, actually, we, we, we hauled it all with here, I mean, since, like you said, since they're just gonna be on one church, they, uh.
Yeah.
They're right there, just distributed right out of the container to come in.
Now, the method they use is the same method that Emergencies Management uses now statewide for, uh, relief shelters. Nobody ever gets out of the car, they drive through, and you put it in, and they keep on going, so that, that's, uh, supposed to work better. I hope they've got room down there to do it, but they've made a choice over.
Okay. What's the next one?
Okay, um, having your package of resolutions sixteen dash zero zero two, which needs one correction in it, but. As where is the town of Wausau, Washington County, Florida, has been notified that the Florida Department of Transportation has provided the town with the First Amendment to the State of Florida Small County Outreach Program Agreement. And whereas the town of Wausau notified the department that the lowest bid was approximately seventy-eight thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight dollars above the construction budget for this project. And whereas the Department of Transportation is offering additional funding in the amount of eighty thousand dollars in order to complete the project. Now for their bid resolved by the Town Council of the Town of Wausau, Washington County, Florida. That the Town Council of the Town of Wausau, Florida agrees to authorize the mayor to enter to the first agreement to the State of Florida Department of Transportation's Small County Outreach Program. Four three seven, two seven three dash one dash fifty-four dash oh one, contract number ARS forty-three, which is attached. Resolved this eleventh day of August, two thousand and sixteen, a record session of the Wausau Town Council.
What's the error?
Uh, as notified, was in there twice, it'd been pre-provided. I'm just checking it, and I'll correct that before it's signed and sent.
You need to read the, uh.
No, that's.
Word of command.
No. Are you kidding?
They just asked, they just asked, that's what, that officially asks the eighty thousand.
Eighty thousand to the project, they just had to have a resolution statement, we accepted that, and authorized the mayor to enter to the contract.
Y'all read, uh, y'all heard the resolution sixteen dash zero zero two. Uh, we're not taking a motion that we accept that resolution as spread.
I move the adoption of resolution sixteen double O two as corrected, uh, the error that Margaret talked about and authorized the chairman to sign the contract for the road project.
I have a motion, I'm here a second.
I'll second.
I'll second. Any further discussion? You are gonna correct that one.
Yes, sir, before you sign.
I'm sure. I was sure. Uh, how do you vote, Miss Barney?
Oh.
It's Marley.
Oh.
Bye, sir, bye.
Okay, we need to set a date and time for the budget workshop, I've got all the estimates in, and have began working on it, but we need to set a time for everybody to be able to sit down and discuss it. I will present y'all with the, the mayor, and I will present you with a balanced budget, but we'll get to discussion on it.
Are you talking about this month?
No, ma'am, it probably won't be this month.
How many, how many hearings, or how many?
We gotta have one workshop and one public hearing, which we can have before our September meeting, and then we'll have to have a special meeting to adopt the budget. What you got, Rose, in that one?
I got two dollars for the freight, that's covered.
What did they say, Mary?
I'll, I'll be saying August tenth, the week of the twenty-ninth.
What's everybody got, the first week of September? We just have to have it, you know, we have to be able to advertise it five days prior to the, uh, public hearing.
The first week of September, we got our meeting on the eighth, are you talking about having two meetings at, or can we have any conjunction with the meeting?
You know, we can't have it on the first week.
Sure.
Or regular eight.
Yeah, well, the first full week, the, the, September comes in on the first.
Oh, it does, y'all think.
So the eighth would be the second Thursday, but it's the first full week.
We can have our, uh, public hearing in, in conjunction with, and then we'll advertise the ordinance for adoption at, and so.
If, if we adopt, can we adopt, but I, I think I seen, let's do that, I think it can, then I think we have to, can we actually adopt the resolution at the October meeting, but.
Jeff Frouting's on that, but.
Okay, okay, let's not, let's not make Jeff Frouting.
He'll crown on it, but we can do it.
I don't make a crown. Uh, we gotta have the.
We just need a workshop.
We gotta have a workshop to talk over the budget.
How about the twenty-fifth? Of this month?
Then we gotta come back and have a public hearing.
That's during the council meeting, regular meeting.
And then we gotta come back and have a special meeting to adopt it.
Right.
Correct. Just waiting up for that.
Twenty, twenty-fifth, that's good, that's two weeks from tonight, that's.
I'll have it.
Marley, is your agenda open?
I can't think of anything.
Me either.
And they gonna have, they gonna have a seed program at that course center that I, so we.
We'll make it short, so you can get there.
No. Yeah, the twenty-fifth.
So, so you can learn how to seed.
Yeah.
Six P M? What day is that on?
Six, that's on, that's on Thursday. What about you, Marley, what time do you, are you free, is, is the evening?
In the afternoon?
Yeah. Or i- i- at this time, I mean, is this?
Five or six, sir.
Could we do it earlier than six?
We can do it five.
Five.
Yeah, I could probably do it at five. I could maybe, for them to make arrangements on the Thursday.
Yeah, sir, we do it, you know, it's not a.
Yeah, they can be.
I think five would be great.
Five, twenty-fifth.
Five on the twenty-fifth.
Five, five on the twenty-fifth.
That would be a workshop, budget workshop.
Okay.
You gonna, you gonna present that so we can understand it, Marley?
Yes, sir.
Compare last year to, to what you're gonna ask for this year, and our management, everything like that. I'm just so pleased with, with, uh, our audit, and I, I sure.
Still looking.
I sure hope we able to just continue with that.
All right, I got a couple more items. Uh, as y'all know, one of our farmhand, Greg's leaving or dying. Greg's been on the department for many, many years. The volunteer fire department, he died without insurance. Didn't take it when the county offered it, you know. Or he didn't finish his paperwork. Um, the fire department has donated five hundred dollars of their monies for the, towards the funeral expenses, and they're asking if the council would match that five hundred dollars. And that's strictly up to y'all.
I don't know.
Y'all have some input.
We ask you if we're about playing, huh?
It's just like a donation to anything, you know, we've done it before, in lieu of flowers, we've sent it to over funeral home, you know. But that's the council.
Never had been that amount, but the, the, the procedure is the same, we just get where it's a donation.
It's like, it's in our lineup, a few other contributions, donate like.
In lieu of flower, which is the same thing, I, I don't see anything, I don't know, I can't think of anything legally to be wrong, but.
And this is contingent that they don't have enough raised, they've been raising money too, so it'd be like the rec department, if they got enough raised, they won't need to sit this check.
And once it, if it's needed, and if we get it okay, it will be presented strictly to over the funeral home. You know, and the people are, just be strict with it, the funeral home will help with expenses. Anybody have any thoughts? Anybody have any comments?
My concern is just whether or not there's, there's a, a legal issue or a press, this. We, we have a compassion there because he's part of the team, but if it was somebody in the community, could we offer them that same, we send flowers to somebody at somewhere I work, Liz, or something like that, could we, could we offer that same thing? Would we become, would we become a place where somebody comes here looking for it? I know there's sometimes.
And I just have a question tonight.
Churches and clubs, churches and clubs are often a target of people who, at a time of need, uh.
I would have to think that, to me, I would have to think this has to be one, one, I mean, a, one-time basis, and then, you know, look at it, you know, different. It's not gonna become an automatic thing by any means, I think it would be.
No, and the most we, you know, we usually, because many years ago, anybody that died or had family that lived in our community and had family that died, we, we always send flowers, especially with sixty-five to a hundred dollars, you know. And we have in the past sent the flower money to the funeral home in lieu of flowers because they, you know.
Something needed.
But it's, it's not over a hundred dollars.
I, I, I tell you, I took what I'd be in favor of, we called our attorney that time, said it was okay, but we know, we know at that time. I'd be, I'd be more favorable if I knew that Mr. Mr. Goodman was on board.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, I don't think this was set a precedent, it may, but I don't think it would, but I mean, I'd, I'd do, I'd rather be legal with it, I'd do that.
Being governmental funds is the only thing that.
Right.
Concerns me.
Me too. I have to say, I do.
I'll, I'll, he's on vacation, but.
Well, yeah, if, if it's, if it's legal, if it's legal, I've got this problem, and, and, and don't mind to justify it, in fact, that, that corporations and companies, and, and that's kind of what we are, we're not a company. Do things for their employees, their team, their people and all that, that they don't do for, for everybody else, and, and so, and, and I'd have, I'd have much less problem with it if I know it's legal.
Yeah.
And this can go on next month, the table till next month till we get an opinion from Jeff, because, you know, we can make the check to over funeral home anytime.
At any time, yeah.
Yeah, just wait on, the table, yeah.
Okay.
I know what it's like, not having insurance.
Yeah.
Not having insurance. But, you know, there's so many that do. So I might.
Okay, I'll check with Jeff. Right now, I can give you an update, Cliff was gonna be here, but as we, we had the bids on, uh, as with our road, the bids on the booster pump came in a hundred thousand dollars over budget also. Uh, we haven't got an answer from water management now, yet, and that will be, Cliff said if he gets the answer, we, we can put it next month, or we can have a special meeting, you know, uh, to get the answer from water management, if they have any funds available to fund that project, or if we're gonna have to cut it to one project.
But they did say we could cut it to one project, if we had to.
She thought, she thought if it, but she hasn't get confirmation from her boss, and they didn't get it done as of yet.
And the project is the one for Moody Hill and the one for Pioneer Road.
So if it comes down, we'll have to choose which one, and we're gonna get a, a good customer from Moody Hill.
I'd be, I'd be going, nobody will get a good customer if we get public works.
And three people want to come on it, though.
But.
We will, but we already got customers on that deserves good service on Pioneer.
They all get good service, uh, fair service, not good service, fair service. But I'm, well, we're still hoping to do, keep sending more money.
Yeah, they're, they're, they've got some monies available, I think, but they have to be approved.
Well, water works very good, I know you've worked with them a lot, past lady.
How, how are we on timeframe?
We're on, we're on timeframe, there's not a limit on this grant. Not like the, and we got our extension from D O T till January first, two thousand and seventeen.
Yeah, that's for our Oley Road.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
We will start that, we'll then, I'm sure.
Yeah, they're gonna bring equipment in for the laydown yard, uh, and we're doing that, they've got their bonds, and all we're waiting is for Dustin at D O T to approve it.
Okay. So do we have to take any action on the, or the well rest, just enough, eh?
That's the update that we're just giving that to, hoping we'll hear something pretty soon.
Maybe they'll come back like that, D O T.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, yeah.
Say, listen, Wausau needs this stuff.
Yeah.
Maybe they give us a D O T upgrade. And light the ball team. Wow, that was, that was a surprise the other day.
Yeah.
They're gonna work hard.
That's good.
That's all I got.
At least, and we're here if we need us.
I think it was, I think it was very good on their part to do what they did tonight.
Amazing, amazing.
To come back and.
Yeah.
And say, we may have to get it again sometime, but here it is, we didn't use it this time.
Yeah. Okay, uh, on my, on the, uh, on the flow meter, if you look in the back of your book, uh, you'll find the flow meter accuracy test.
And a letter from Miss Josie.
And, uh, they're, uh, they're not happy with us. Which makes us unhappy. The, uh, number three well out there, the accuracy, when they, uh, were required by the D E P, I believe, uh, the D E P was required by.
Yeah, they did.
But, uh, water, uh, the water does the testing, and they came out and did our accuracy test, and number three well, we should, I knew it well, we should have been perfect, uh, measurements. Being as, uh, and we see number two well, which is down at the tank, that's, uh, like this. And it says, uh.
Less than one percent.
Uh, up here it says, well, number two, that's the one at the tank, uh, that's the old old well, it came in minus point one zero, which is well, well, well within limits. That's just one percent inaccurate, which is only known as nothing. But then the number three well, if it was next page over, it came in, uh, what, seven six percent, I mean, seven point six percent, which is well without range, he said, I think three or four percent was max. So, uh, we got a company here from, uh, Thompson, come over and do a second check to make sure that his equipment was accurate, and he came out with a, on the next page, he came up with eight percent inaccurate. It's a little, kind of handwritten like this. Yeah. So I contacted them and told them that we've got to have a, we're not, not we weren't wanting or knowing, we've got to have either this old and calibrated, recalibrated, repaired and calibrated, or we gotta have a new flow meter. And he did some estimates for us, and on the next three pages, you'll find, uh, the first one is an estimate for a digital new one, new one installed. Would be, uh, the, the top line there is nineteen seventy-seven, that's the, that's the price of the, uh, meter. And the other stuff is the same one all pages. Second page is, uh, to recalibrate the old one. It's fifteen fifty-seven, which is only two hundred and twenty, two dot, two hundred and twenty dollar difference, none of four hundred and one off there. And the third page was if it had an old readout of, a manual readout, new one, they were twenty-seven sixty-five. So that's, uh. So, uh, that's, uh, that's kind of a no brainer to me, if we buy a brand new one. Uh, for four hundred dollars more, we get a brand spanking new digital one, which the other one is an old mechanical one, that's a lot of moving parts in it. And it has a one year warranty, I called him back to make sure it has a one year warranty. And, uh, we should be sitting for fifty years over that, with that digital, maybe, you know, it's just a digital, so you don't have any moving parts in it. But for four hundred dollars, we can get a new meter installed. More than having the old ones sent off for repairs. And not sure how many weeks or months it's going to take to get it back. And in the meantime, our well's going to be sitting out there with a, with a blank flange on it. And we don't, we just have to guesstimate how much water we're pumping. And that's the choice that we have.
How often does this test do?
Uh, every year.
Every three years, right?
No, it was, uh, if, if it's accurate.
Every three years.
Maybe it is three years.
See, and I know time gets away from me, but it don't seem like it's been three years since we've been setting our argument books, since all of this.
But they installed an old meter, it was not new.
Um, ninety-nine, since you're.
They couldn't even find the numbers on it, they couldn't even find the numbers on it.
Uh, he was going to do a check back and, uh, he called it calibrated, and he had a serial number on it, and I said, this doesn't even calculate, we can't find it.
He said they can't.
We can't find what it, what, what you even got over there. So it's just another, one of those things that happened to us on that well installation.
Yeah, we.
That, that was not the only thing.
When he gets over and tells you, we'll go.
If he gets one date, we'll talk to them.
Please don't even joke like that. So my choice tonight, I mean, the, what I'm asking you for.
Yeah.
Is, would it be, which do you think would be the most feasible? We buy a new one? And it be installed for twenty-six, forty-seven? Or do we get an old one overhauled? And for twenty-two fifty-two?
Three hundred and ninety-five dollars.
Yeah, so I mean, well, probably give them, give them, out of the case, you know, we need to run out of.
With being the same people.
Well, we're still going to have the same old piece of equipment, it's just been kind of upgraded. Still going to be an old one, that's, uh, I, I, I'll never forget this, and it was just, uh, it's still a bummer, I might, it's a rare history. When we were putting that in over there, I know that we had a contract, in our contract, it was, everything in that pump house was going to be new. Well, I come over here one day and they were tearing all the stuff out of this old pump house, that was abandoned, well, I said, what are y'all going to do with that? We've taken it over there, and I said, wait a minute, we, we, we contracted for new, up, up to date, top line equipment. No, they told us we need to save as much money as we can, I said, you don't understand, if, I said, this stuff's ten years old. And electronics ten years old is a lifetime. That's like fifty years of anything else, because it's just changing so fast. We still went up with old stuff. Because I could not find, and I read, and I read, and it never did anywhere in this way. But we were told that it would be.
But it was not. And right.
And, uh, I have to tell you that don't mean anything anymore. And, uh, anyway, and I'm sure this is the same kind of stuff, what I'm, as a part of, man. It's old stuff, it was old stuff, three years ago. It didn't go bad in three years, I promise you.
No, it didn't. And the one, the one down at number two is, so it'll be three years before they read it again?
Yeah.
And if it's three years, it isn't, messes up in two months from now, we won't know it until three years. But there's no penalties or anything, it goes from one reading to the next reading, is, is, if we find something at the next reading, then we have to correct that.
Right.
Okay.
The, the thing about it is, I mean, it's what, it's costing us.
Yeah.
Because if, if the meter's flowing and, uh, it shows, uh, uh, a hundred gallons. And the actual flow is a hundred and eight gallons. So we're losing eight gallons out of every hundred gallons, and if you use a million gallons, that's a lot of gallons, you know. So it's really costing us to be inaccurate, and that's what rural order wants to keep us from being is inaccurate.
And actually, the auditor orders our order, don't they?
Yeah, and this is going to make us look even better, because, uh, we have a certain amount of uses, but, that would cut our uses by eight percent right off the bat, sure, you know. So what I'm needing is a motion to, uh, either, or not, sort of need to make the decision on which one do we want. Which one do y'all think would be the better?
I think, I think the digital.
I do too, I do too.
Okay, then what I need is a motion to go ahead with the purchase of a, uh, from Thompson, Thompson Regional Services, uh, in Quincy. To go ahead and purchase a digital, uh, flow meter and have it installed. And you only gave estimates, and, and I told him, I said, we can install it, but I want the person who has bought it to install it. That way they can't say, oh, you bumped it or something like that, you know.
That's a good plan.
I don't want my hand on it.
It's a good plan.
So it would be okay with everyone, I, I need a motion to, with it, it's going to be over two thousand dollars.
Yeah, estimate number five forty-two would be the one we go with.
I, I make the motion, make the request, or are you going to talk to her?
We have a used estimate, five forty-two.
I second it.
I have a motion to second, and a vote of discussion. How you put, Ms. Barney?
Uh.
Ms. Marley?
Uh.
It's not what we wanted or not, we got to have, and it's just ours, way to ours advanced.
Wish better than fetus.
Yeah. If you don't have, if you kind of, normally, if you kind of live in low to the pocket, if you get something fixed, it's cheaper than buying a new one, not this good. Okay, uh, I want to have a fire workshop, fire department workshop in somewhere in September. We're, uh, we're still getting a lot of misinformation, and it's, uh, it, it's not, it's not for good, the department ought to give us to sit here and, and tell things like, well, that works and stuff like that, and then you talk to one firm in a week from now. I have no idea what you're talking about. I like when, I like when Margaret send out letters, or if we're able to turn it off. We're still waiting, uh, for an opinion ahead.
No, we may not get that in September, I don't know how long.
Don't think it's September?
Uh, how long does it take, Roger, do you know, the attorney general opinion?
Attorney general opinion, it could take three months.
Well. I'm not, I'd rather not go forward until we get an attorney general opinion. And, uh, we always have to table that till another day.
Did Jeff send it, or did we send it?
Jeff did.
Jeff, yes.
That'll probably shorten it.
It should.
Look for six weeks.
Well, uh, in that case, I'm, I'm, I'm familiar with it.
But I think it's a good idea.
But we just don't have to sit down and, uh,
Need a backup or good follow.
Yeah.
I think it's a good idea, because.
Just walk around and exhale, I'm just so tired of it.
After while, you start, you start Bruce Pickens, you start friendships getting fractured, and, and I don't want to be a part of that.
I want to be where we can eyeball to eyeball.
That's right.
They can ask us questions, we can ask them questions.
Sometimes the answer, sometimes the answer is, is no, I used to tell commissioners that all the time, sometimes the answer is no. But the way that you say no doesn't have to be.
You don't have to be a fighting no.
That's right, that's right.
It can be a diplomatic.
Yeah, it can be.
I mean, but like I said, I'd just like for everybody to know that this is where we have to stand.
I like the way that Andrew Ellis said, hey, I asked you one time, did you never have to say, tell anybody that when you were serving on board? He says, I never did, he says, sometimes I said, yes, we cannot do that. But I never said no, Andrew Ellis.
I did.
They probably did.
That's a good diplomatic no. But, okay, well, uh, I just want, I want y'all to be aware.
Is it all right with, with the two of you that if, if we get the attorney general's opinion sooner, then?
And we could call later.
In the calendar?
We could call the workshop.
Call the one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't want to keep putting it off and putting it off, it, it's, it's, this is something we should have done, maybe, uh, maybe in fall, we should have maybe done this a year ago, six months ago or something.
And maybe, maybe periodically.
Well, we supposedly, supposed to get quarterly reports and that, I'd be more than happy if everyone in the fire department came in for quarterly reports, you know.
Which I'll get what I prepare, so.
I like, I like for everybody here to walk the same.
And, and because we had something good here tonight, doesn't mean that we don't have to be careful. See, if we've got, if we've got somebody here that's representing the city and they're out raising funds too, does that not put them in the same category of somebody over here that's out raising funds as well? I, I think we're going to have to be very, very careful, anytime we're, I, I'm almost convinced that all money needs, needs to come through, through our books, when it's talking about something that's using our names, using our equipment, our properties and things like that. I don't know how to make that word, but I, I think we've got to be very careful about, about somebody raising funds and, and our name's attached to it. Could you check, uh, is all right if I ask more?
Yeah.
Could you check maybe with some of our other communities and see, do they have?
You're talking about like ball raising funds?
Uh, anything, uh, well, I'm talking about fire now, or ball, or, and see, do they have, do they have entities that have individual or, or unaudited or whatever, whatever I'm trying to say, that they can, that they, they've got money that.
Except for a camp.
Anybody that does fundraising, it, well, I know like right now, the Vernon Peewee cheerleaders are selling ribs, you know, for uniforms. I don't know if that filters back to the city of Vernon or not.
That's what I want to know, does that go to, uh, does that go in the real account, or does that?
Go to the city of Vernon Camp, Recreation Department.
You get a lot of folks out here with checking books and checking accounts and all that, and then we quit having balls, so who gets the money? Or we quit having.
Right.
I'll check on it.
Yeah, I, I'd just like to know.
I'll have someone next month.
But I think it's a good idea, Mr. Sherman, my, my opinion.
I'm sure that we got to do it.
So just wait till, tabled until the attorney general opinion is received and then.
Yeah, and as I said, if it comes in sooner, uh, or if it's close to our next skipper meeting, then we can say the workshop after that.
Election of officers in the fire department, September, second, Monday and October.
I'd buy, I'd buy that. I'd buy you that, uh, satisfied, settled. Okay, well, I got, uh, well, I got a note here about dogs and goats, but, uh,
We got them.
We, we think we got that under control, I'm hoping, we're going to keep working on it. A civil party back tonight, she said, uh, what are y'all going to talk about? And so, and it, it's not really a lot tonight, and still, she said, well, I got two dogs that somebody threw down on my yard just two days ago. I said, well, they're a little white, one in the little, one in the brown, no. I said, oh man, well, I know we're four, throwed out dogs, uh, because he's, or two more down around, uh, where your brother lives.
And we got our.
They say, they say that's, people said, that's God's dog, I said, ain't my dog, so we're going to have to pick those up.
He got one little dog registered.
But, um, we haven't, we haven't got the newsers right now with, uh, Mike, Mike's saying, he said this morning, went in there and he, went in the office, he looked back there a few minutes, he had a, a one dog, one goat and five dogs in his, in his, in his work spot in there.
And, and if I, if I were running business now, that just wouldn't, that wouldn't work out.
It's not working, but he doesn't know how to, uh, to resolve it, uh, without making lots of people money mad.
When we get there, he calls over, we get there. And we can't catch them out, we, they're on our property when we catch them.
But if they're over, he's a problem.
Tell him to let, tell him to let the door down?
I told him, I said, Mike calls before you run them home, and when you get them.
We're going, we're going to work on it.
Let the door down, that'd be inside his building when.
Yeah, we work on it, I just.
We went, we went through two years of that, and I don't want.
No, we don't get back in that, where we was at before.
And this, this person's come up here and, and, uh, and left the phrase she'd heard fetus and things like that, but, you know, definitely a dog of the north, we went through a long time, a lot of years to do that.
Yeah, it's gotten better, it's got the.
Yeah, it's gotten better, it's got some.
Still a lot, still a lot, full of, for a while. And, uh, well, shit, I don't like that, oh. I got one, this is something I can, meandering in your mind to us, this is information. I saw, uh, your boy did that, they cut the grass, it was up to my knees, bush hogging with a, with a, because he was supposed to be bush hogging the right of ways. Uh, and our scag is not even locally designed for that, it's, it's to cut grass with at once. And in the process, I'm not sure, I don't think we even got to bill yet, but our scag wound up staying going for three or four weeks, needing a new muffin or anything, burn off of it. But we're going to have to either come up with a plan, either we can't cut out kind of, without kind of boombox, or we're going to have to buy a finish mower and a, a small tractor or something, but that scag will not cut that stuff out. It just, it's not designed for it. That right of way grass, uh, it's never been cut below this deep, I mean, this high, you know, with a bush hog. If you start trying to cut that two inches, it's like, almost like running through the side of this, this thing right here, it just, it just will not cut, it just burns, I mean, it burns a lot of stuff on, on that scag. It looks good, sure, but if you want to keep spending, uh, y'all can start building, uh, buying a new scag every couple of years, that's how we have to work after a while. But, and so, y'all, whatever y'all want to do.
If we got another stack of scag, we won't have to get industrial, heavy duties they make, and I don't think that's what we got now. It may not be what we need now, but we, I mean, thirty years ago, we bought a massive roof and tractor and a book and tobacco and things like that. We had people that done lots of maintenance inside the community, our, our maintenance people did. Uh, don't know what Mark's going to do, don't know what Jim is going to do. But if we had, if we had, um, a small tractor with a bush hog.
A finish, a finish mower.
A finish mower, uh.
That would be great, that'd be fantastic. That'd be fantastic.
It'd be, I, I'd be in favor of us trying to, trying to do that, if we've got a place to put it now, lock it in, keep it.
Uh, it was even suggested in that, I mean, it is a suggestion, that we just buy a finish mower, put it on the back of this Kubota, or you can have to quick disconnect the, uh, the bucket, and I, I have a real problem with that. Because, uh, invariably, you're not, you're going, you're not going to take that bush hog off there at night when you get back after, you know, cutting the grass. On the middle of night or early in the morning or tomorrow, uh, we blow a six inch line, somebody runs off a, a, a fire plug and rounds it off. You can't say, okay, run, bring, get the backhoe, because the backhoe's sitting up there with a bush hog on it. So then you got to down it and, I don't know, from two to, I think, probably needs two people, maybe two hours to change this thing out. And the water's being up, uh, I'm just saying that you can't, I don't think we can cross use that.
I can check state bids, see who's got tractors.
I think it'd be a good start. I'm all for you, a, a small.
I think a second unit out there would be real bad.
We need something.
Yeah.
There is, uh, you know, like.
Because right now, we're mowing all the streets with a scag.
If you get that second, if we get that second unit too, we might get it with a hydraulic mower. And then sometime if this one did go down, we could, we could put our hoe and bucket on it if we have to, that's not the problem with getting it. But if we, if we come equipped, we, it would be.
Yeah, no, yeah, I mean, have your choice, I mean, get a, uh, check on a Kubota. Uh, in the same, are you talking about a Kubota of the same type, or, you know, or something like crossover? I mean, we know.
But you want something that'll pull that one, that.
Yeah, well, you're going to have enough power to, uh, pull it. But I'd be, I mean, like I said, it really looks nice if you go all the way out, I'm all for it, but that bush hog, it did not, that scag won't handle it.
I'll get state bid contract prices.
Okay, that's all I have. Uh, right there.
Okay, uh, I was talking to, uh, somebody who I know, Kevin Martin, uh, if you'll remember Sheila Rogers, Lord Rogers's wife, it's her brother. Uh, he's been with Comcast, I believe he told me twenty-nine years or something, and, and he's kind of measured. He said that, uh, and this goes back to some history, he said that when Darkstar left, uh, uh, Sunny Hills, and they were providing Walsall with cable, that Comcast wanted to buy them out, and they'd rather, they'd rather close and sell to a competitor or something like that. Uh, I don't know if there's ever any inquiry ever in interest, so many people now do satellites or does dishes or something else, I don't know. But, uh, he, he said, and I gave Margaret his name and a number, uh, if we're interested in seeing whether or not somebody wants to bring cable to Walsall. I don't, I don't know how that works, and I know that Vernon has it, Chippy has it, uh, one time before I retired, Chippy had talked about branching way down this way, and I think Vernon, one time, Margaret, we talked to Mur, uh, Vernon about it. But I don't know if any of you ever get a request, why can't we have cable in Walsall? But if we're interested in it, there is a, a name and a number with Comcast that we could contact, so.
What's the difference between cable and the dish?
Uh, the cable would probably be something that would come through the city like our. Uh, the cable would probably be something that would come through the city like our water does, and like our garbage does, and we might could get a percentage off of it, it, it may be something we would generate a little bit of revenue. Uh, whereas the, the dish is just between you and the dish provider. Probably the packages are, uh, dish packages are probably greater than cable packages, I don't know that. We had a pretty good cable package back then, we had probably twenty, twenty-five stations, I don't know, and I think some of your dishes, some of the satellites, you can get fifty or
Shoot, I get probably five hundred on mine.
But the, the
One cost.
Did they get money?
We got franchise fees.
Franchise fee.
Yeah.
But we paid directly to, I remember when I had to pay, it was
I don't get very many inquiries, I, you know?
I've never, yeah.
I just
Now, my next question would have, how many would, would be
If it's
Be required to be a minimum?
Yeah.
So I know they got to set up a, a package somewhere here at the branch out front.
If we wanted to do anything, we could do a, one of a couple of things, we could call them, say, "Do you want to come in and survey our tank?" Or we could send out the next thing, we do a, a, our, our quarterly letter, say, "If you have an interest, if you have an interest, let us know." And, and, uh, it's not something we just want to chase down and pursue, but
If it would be cheaper, I'd sure be interested.
Yeah. Uh, the second thing there is probably more of an extra item. Uh, Mr. Walksonham has asked me again, I've gone and stood over there again. We did not, we did not fix that like we said we would, when, when we said we would. Uh, he's, and I, I don't know what him, his and Mr. Carter Dallas's conversation was. Uh, Mr. Walksonham said to me that Mr. Carter said, "Yeah, we didn't get it, I should have done more," and I, I don't know all that. But, but that's not what he had over there when our water lines went through there and tore it out. And, uh, probably most of us would be like him if we had something and it was torn out, we'd move back
And it's worried him to death.
It is.
He's called me, and I've had to go over there.
Yeah. I was over there probably a couple of weeks ago, we was, we was sailing, trying to close it out, and, and
And I told him to come to the meeting now.
Yeah, I did too.
That was his brother.
If you slow, if you slow down on that speed, he's gonna, he's gonna get you, let me tell you so.
I, I, I do not know when they come in to do the work over here. I don't know what it'd cost for them to go around there with their little machine and form up and pour curve. But, but if we've got any money in our street department budget, that would be a good time for us to get somebody to go around there and form that and put it back in place and, and try to, try to end that, uh, if we could.
Was it on the right of way, or on his land?
Yeah, no, it's right away, it's
And he had had permission to put it?
He said he did, he told me he did.
I don't know timing, I don't know.
I think Lee Wood was here, somebody.
Okay.
And what we voted on previously was to get quotes, and the quotes came in too high to do anything. But with this, with the company coming in, and I thought we can do it, I thought we could probably work something with the companies that's coming in here to do something, you know, to give a surprise.
Can you, can you make some notes between you and Cliff and whomever our, our point of contact with that company be? See what they'll do, and is it all right if it's, if something they were doing is within our limits, and we got the money and the budget for us to go ahead and do that?
Well, when are they gonna come in and do that work?
We got that, they'll be here soon.
Between now and the end of the year.
They're gonna be, they're gonna be in here and out by January one.
Just gonna be in the next couple of three, three months.
Yeah.
So I guess within thirty days they'll be in, but we kinda, we kinda owe it to him to at least give him an answer. We're never going to do anything else, or we're going to try to fix it back, or something like that, so. But you're right, if you, if you slow down over there, if you, if you're walking, you'll get, you'll get pale over there.
You're next door, you're in trouble.
Okay.
And I'll take care of them.
Thank you. Our code enforcement.
Oh, man, yes. Is he, is he still working with us?
Mm-hmm.
Everybody's in. I agree with you on that one, on that grant, mine never thinks like them.
It's just sold to Premier Asset Management Company, it's just went to auction, it just sold. It's got a new owner as of the, uh, first of the month.
First of this
First of August, yes. So I, I can send that company a letter.
That's the company we need to top it, oh, you need
And I can probably get a number for a million.
That would just, just right about that.
It's Premier Asset Management Company.
Or just, uh, if you want to, if you want
Whatever, uh, and I'm, I don't want to get ahead of our code enforcement officer, but, but once in a, I, I mean, he, he's doing, and I guess, Miss Burney, your
Well, we were gonna do one, take a picture this week, but it's been raining.
Yeah, yeah.
And I just have
And that other one down here on, uh, hmm, that's Fourth Street. Uh, it's in the Fourth Street, very in there on that Fourth Street and Monroe.
Fourth, Fourth and Monroe.
I, so, I remember the other night, somebody said, "Well, that's been cut," and I said, "No, I don't think it is." I went by there, and you can't even see the trail it's calling, it's behind, eight foot dog fell back there. It's definitely not being cut.
Yeah, that, that's what I was told, it's cut, it's
It is not being cut.
I told it that too, but I'll send them one too.
Okay. At the end of the road, there's been some work done. I do not know if, if any, uh, I do not know if in the, in the ordinance that we actually set a standard that, that, uh, this, I mean, they, they still plenty that I'd have they still think that I'd do
Third Street?
Fourth, Fourth Avenue.
Fourth Avenue, uh, Oakley Road, the Jenner Clemmons.
Oh, 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 yeah, okay. Uh, there's some there, but
Yeah.
Well, at least it cut the corner out, yeah.
Yeah, and, and does that make a lot, is that part of theirs, or?
I think so.
Uh, on, next to to, uh, Jackson?
Yeah, that's right across the street, right there.
It's outside the finish, yeah, that one, that one's fair.
It could, it could stand a lot more, please.
It could stand a finish on it.
Oh, yeah, it could ever stand a finish on it.
Down here, down here
Bill Moore.
Under Oak Tree? I mean, it, it's
I don't know.
Start and stop, start and stop.
Well, yeah, I don't know.
Jeff's got that one, I'll touch base with him on that.
Okay.
I tried to this week, but he's gone on vacation.
One week you think they're gonna get it cleaned up, and next, next week you look and say, "Well, it's moved."
Yeah, but work
It's still there, you just gotta move.
And we're eight or nine months into it.
And that's just been, that's been ridiculous. Well, we've had to hold up for a while because the, the landowner, I think, was
Probably a victim.
Had a
What about going across the street over here?
That's gonna be resolved, it's gonna resolve itself, I'm not sure exactly when.
About the end of the month or so.
Yeah.
Maybe, maybe.
I'm not, I'm not sure, I hope it gets cleaned up, but that's gonna be up to the personal laws probably then. They leave and that's the leave that I
If they leave and leave it there and we have to clean it up, we can reclaim it.
Yeah, we can, yeah. It's not gonna set like that for a month, two, two months, I'll say. After they leave, it's just not gonna do it. We clean it up, and then we'll go through the courts, so. I mean, there's so much you can just keep
Yeah.
Back forth, back and forth, it just can't
Scripting a note, let me go quickly on three things. Got a call from the library today, y'all remember when we had the, uh, open night, uh, the open air movie thing? I asked Susan about that some, several months ago, uh, did that be something that would be recurring? Did that be something that is a community outreach, recreation, public kind of thing? Got a call from the library today, and, and they just let me know they hadn't forgot us, and said that they can do it much cheaper than we can, and that, uh, they will make us up a budget, present it back to us, where we could do it maybe twice, three times a year, something like that, if we wanted to. Uh, they can pay for one of them, we might could chip in and pay for one, or, or something like that. And, uh, if we have an interest in it, so they, that's just an FYI, they'll, they'll send us some information, if we're not get it, we'll bring it back, we'll bring it back to you.
They gave me brief on what we're talking about.
Remember, back in the spring of the year, I, I
Is this the one that had the ball field?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, now we
They had a good turnout.
Yeah, it was open, open night or something.
And, and, you know, that'd be great, family kind of thing.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, they could have popcorn sales and everything else, that'd be, that'd be the old days.
Yeah, yeah.
Y'all probably not old
That would be, that would be a, I'm trying to justify, so here, here's my justification, that would be a, that would be a, a, an outdoor recreation event for, for senior citizens, for old, for older citizens. We, we're not gonna play ball in old movies, or
We just have to wait until dark, so they won't know if it's old or young there. After you have dark, you'll know if it's young or they're old.
The thing, uh, Margaret said she's getting some good feedback on the water bill, I, I didn't know we were changing, but, but that's, that's similar to what our REA bill, my name, say, what you, last year, last year I used twenty-three thousand and four hundred gallons.
In one year?
Same, same month. In the same month, I used fifty gallons. No, that's when I had, that's when I had that rector, had, had showers head and running for three weeks.
Oh, yeah, I learned you there.
Had to re, work that bill, so, so, uh, I, I like the fact that you put animal registration, uh, you, you put, you should put notes in there. I, I like, I like that. And the license thing, uh, when I look at our check statements and, and things like that, do you, how, how do you generate our checks? On the computer, you don't do it on a manual typewriter, I need to type him as on computer.
Okay.
I'm just wondering on that memo line, can, can we put what it's for? I see a number down there sometimes, I see
Oh, yeah, I usually just put the invoice number, but yes, I can.
Uh, you know, I, I don't want to come here and ask you about every day between jurors, but once in a while, some occasion, so I can say, well, I, you know, I have to test. But if you put this down there, of course, postmaster is, this is oversimplified, but I see postmaster, on the memo line, put stamps, or put, or, you know, the John, the John Doe company, put down a quote we bought from John Doe, and, and that would satisfy a lot of my questions, and I have some kinds of I don't have anything else, Mr. Sherman?
Okay, uh, Miss Marley? Water looking good? I forgot, I called you the other day, and I, well, no, and everything was broke down over there, maybe you come over and give us some advice, but I haven't any.
We need to have a lightening. We had a lightening down there or something, we got a charger. Yeah, it's a hundred and two dollars.
But now we got a, now we got a
A charger.
We got a better charger to fuel up, so.
Hundred and two dollars.
Yeah.
It's on its way.
It's on its way. But, uh, just small things.
Like this.
But, uh,
Like this.
If you want me to, I'll call you now.
Yeah, you can.
Bring, bring a shovel, we'll get you a
Yeah, yeah, handle, so, get up two pallets, bring you two.
Yeah, I've got one, Hamlet's broke down, I was, I was, uh, shoveling poop out of my yard for people to park Saturday, last Saturday.
For her horse.
Somebody else in town?
For her dogs that she don't have.
Miss Burney, you have anything?
No, I don't think so.
Any further discussion on any, anything? I entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Have a motion, here's second.
Second.
Second, all favor eye? We're adjourned. Please turn off the mic.
Next
Thank you, thank Ellen for the bench.
Thanks, Mike, we will have the other coaches here for their class presentation.